Well, let's get started. As you're all aware, the meeting is being audio recorded, but unfortunately, we don't have video today, so there's not going to be mad scramble for the right chair. We have three 10- to 15-minute presentations today, which is pretty much going to fill up our entire time. We'll start with Attorney Shree overviewing the overhaul to work to, excuse me, right-to-know policy.
You were going to say right to work, weren't you?
That was what I thought. And suddenly, an uncontemptious meeting was going to become contentious. Then we'll move on to legal voting voters, who will be talking about redistricting, and then finally, Paul Pascuzzi is here from the Council on Governments by our Services Committee to talk about EMS. And then if we have time after each of these, we can move on to quarterly objectives and that sort of thing. So with that, Attorney Shree.
Sure. Excuse me, everybody. Covering from a little, little stroke there.
Oh, great.
Attorney, attorney can't talk a lot. A lot of things can be said about that.
That's a good thing.
But pretty much what I wanted to do here was to go and update. It was my understanding that the last update on this policy wasn't 2009, not long after the last major revision made to Pennsylvania's open records law. I wanted to go update. I also wanted to condense the information that was in several places into one and create one comprehensive go-to source for anybody who wanted to utilize the open records process or wanted to find an answer to a particular question that they had when going through that process. Also kind of wanted to break down in the most user-friendly way possible, the various outcomes that were possible. At the same time, did want to go and differentiate, differentiate the county policy based upon those with elected officials, because while requests that come into the county through our open records officer go through their own policy, there are separate laws, separate statutes affecting elected officials. For example, in the register of the quarter, they have their own statutory guidelines regarding fees that they can set. As far as the district attorney, a common example is when he's in possession of records pertaining to an ongoing criminal investigation. That would generally tend to be handled within that office. So I kind of wanted to differentiate the other elected officials and give them room to continue to abide by their standard operating procedure and their statutory requirements. Initially going through, kind of wanted to go set out basic information for people, the timelines associated with when they can expect a response, how to go and get in contact with our office, the procedures that are going to be required in actually going and making a proper request to our office, because the law does provide some leeway regarding vol- regarding verbal and regarding anonymous requests. I just wanted to go and pin that down, get it to proper written requests, provide plenty of guidance in terms of what needs to be in a request so that people don't have to come back and re-request, or if their request is improper and gets denied for that basis, that we don't end up in an unnecessary court situation, which has happened and kind of prompted the need to do a policy rewrite here. I wanted to go through and provide, which I think is very important for people to understand, they get a response from the open records officer following initial response, following initial request, and kind of wanted to break down and give some additional guidelines, because in certain cases, depending on the nature of a request, sometimes the county can request additional time, sometimes the county can only deny, can only grant part of a request, deny it in part. And I really wanted to get down, get specifically in there and give people guidance, this is why that could happen, and this is what you do if that happens, these are your options. So if you notice in the new policy, there's significant notation devoted towards, say you get a response where the county's requesting additional time. These are the circumstances where that could happen. This is how an initial extension would be sought, this is how it would be granted, this is how, if that's not long enough, this is where we're going to go from here. Just kind of giving people that process map, point to point, so they don't get, they don't get lost in the process, which most times, it really is a simple, easy thing. But when you get certain types of records, records that are stored off-site, or records where there are significant legal questions as to privilege, as to acceptability, then kind of sets that forth and gives people an understanding of what to expect and how to go about that. Another new key to the, to the new policy is, we wanted to go and provide people with the exceptions for those records that are exempt from disclosure, because something I've noticed in my time here is that people will go and will make the request, and it will be information that we really can't provide. And looking through our current policy, it didn't, it didn't go and define that, didn't break that down, so people really didn't have a lot of guidance in terms of, well, you know, this, this is something that I really can't request, this is something that they're not going to be able to provide. So I very much wanted to go break that down, specifically show people that it's not a decision we're making, it's just, it's an exemption under the law, these are things that we can provide you with, and these are things we can't provide you with.
Going through, just generally, I appreciate the level of detail in it, just because I did feel like our original open records policy was somewhat vague as far as like what types of records would be, you know, wouldn't be a part of a disclosure, you know, and it seemed like every request would require a lot of discussion as far as, you know, what, you know, like, like there's a clear list that even references the Act 708, the kind of list of things that would be exempted from a, from a disclosure. You know, for instance, would result in the loss of federal or state funds by an agency or the Commonwealth, like a, you know, a record that might result in that. So I thought that, I think that's a good thing to have more detail, it, it frees our open records officer up to, you know, rather than to have to make snap decisions or, you know, rely on constantly talking to the solicitor for recommendations, it spells that out really clear.
Yeah, and that's one thing that wanted to provide people with too, is if they had a question as to why, you know, why certain procedure was followed, why they received a certain type of response, why a certain record was exempt from disclosure, wanted to provide them with specific references where they could go to the act themselves and they can see directly there. It's not something that we're deciding on the county level, it's going along with the parameters that are provided to us by the state. Also wanted to go, provide very detailed information as to, you know, should a protester not feel that we made the right decision, very open disclosure of how to appeal us, where they can obtain additional information, making available a lot of the resources that the open records office publishes online and a lot of the material that they provide, trying to incorporate that into our policy. Also included, clearly, we have limited discretion in terms of the fees that we charge associated with open records requests. That's a subject which is continually subject to change. The open records office, I guess, in its caps gets to go and decide what can be charged or can't, what, what types of services even warrant a fee. So I really wanted to go and update that, because that's where I noticed that we were a little outdated, was in terms of the fees that we were charging. And also in that section, there's a detailed, a detailed list of the different things that we can do in terms of converting digital records to paper, how we would go about that, providing enhanced electronic access to a database for certain types of requests, really giving everyone anything that they would need to know about. If there's a record, how they go about properly requesting it, what we can and what can't provide, the different ways that they could be given access, and it outside of the most common, just it gets emailed over or it gets mailed over, really just breaking down everything. I know it's a little longer than our old policy, but I just feel that based upon some of the requests that I had seen in this position, I think that we're going to be able to get a lot more efficiency out of the open records officer and in that process for the county by going, providing people with that information. I think we're going to have less challenges, frankly. I think we're going to have less problematic requests, and I think that I'll end up, frankly, spending less time on this type of work. I think that most of that will be exclusively performed by the open records officer himself. So that's, that's the hope. I did leave room for further additions. I know that there was going to be one addendum in regard to online published.
Social media.
Yeah.
Is it through the website too? Or just?
Well, we started talking about, we've had a conversation about the archived social software, which we're already starting to use, and we're going to put all of our social media profiles in there. The thing is, is we didn't want to tie that software into the policy, because there are things that are unique to it as far as the way it functions, so the addendum would be related to archived social, you know, and the use of social media, so that it can be easily edited, you know, if we change software vendors or something along those lines.
Okay.
The one thing I was going to ask is, is do we, do we need to have a conversation, I don't remember there being anything here in case like the open records officer has a long-deln list and we have to monitor, should we have a conversation about a backup, like, in a case that's like triggered in the, in the event that, you know, Pam Adve is, you know, sick for two weeks, you know, for whatever reason? Just because if you go just by this and we can't fulfill a record within five days and, and I, you know, we might not have the wherewithal to trigger that.
Assume that it will get kicked to the solicitor.
As it stands now, yes. I know other county, counties do utilize an assistant open records officer. For larger counties, obviously, multiple assistants, but usually there is one other person who could step in before the solicitor, if something like that were to happen.
Something floating.
Do we, well, can we, can we then add you to the email chain for open records requests through the website? And, you know, and then my other question is, is like, if somebody calls and leaves a message, you know, for Pam, unless we have access to a voicemail box? Like, I'm just thinking about this proactively. It doesn't necessarily have to be in this policy per se, but I think that.
Basically force them to fill out a form. They can't just leave a voicemail.
Yeah, the requests through this policy have to be written. I mean, obviously, other offices, like the voluntary office, you know, folks can stop in, provide a verbal request, you know, as with the service counter. But in terms of utilizing the open records officer, the law gives us discretion to accept voluntary requests. Logistically, we have the, I find it better to go with written requests. I think that really prevents a request from falling through the cracks and, you know, ending up in court when it does not.
Much better have a document.
I guess I'm thinking about it the wrong way, because I'm thinking about the people who just call Pam up and ask her for information, and then she, she'll make them fill out a form. I mean, she generally has a form that she puts in the docket, but, yeah, so in that case, they'll just have to wait until they make a request.
Regardless, whenever a request comes in, I mean, Pam has to go and make a folder for it anyway, so it is best practice to go and get that specifically on the form.
Right. By the way, for everyone's benefit, now that your presentation is done, commissioners will have a few minutes to ask questions, and we'll open it up to the public for other questions. So do you two have anything else?
I brought the document. I had some questions, you've answered them during your presentation.
Yeah, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Any public comment or questions about the original policy?
There's nothing in this that kind of protects us from having to comply with right-to-know requests that are just from vendors, sale pitches. Is there?
That's, that's the open records officers, like the termination base of the policy, right?
The law provides, and obviously, any part of the law is incorporated into this policy by reference, but there are provisions governing disruptive requests. That is on a case-by-case basis. Unfortunately, you can't just do a blanket denial to, because I've seen them, I know how honest they can be. Someone requests an enormous amount of information in many different mediums, and they're doing it to every county, you know, sometimes in whole regions, from every state, every county, and it's oftentimes to, you know, form solicitations to municipal entities, and it is a burden. In some cases, you can go and you can find a disruptive request, in others, unfortunately, you do have to comply with it. It really is case-by-case specific facts.
I mean, we just did the one last week from a vendor company that was looking for every utility that we have, every account, every information, so they could check through our, our gas accounts, our electric accounts, and try to pitch something different to us. We also have one from a software company that wants to take over your accounts payable, and they wanted years' worth of accounts payable payment records that really, and even when you start looking at that data, if you have payments that are made that are related to sealed cases or anything, I mean, we can't just massively go out and grab the AP file and send it anywhere and.
Yeah, I mean, the law, we're under no burden, I believe that's section 705, we're under no burden to create a record that doesn't exist. The problem is, when we have that information, it is subject to disclosure, and you can get some very honest requests. I mean, the, the bar for disruptive requests is very, very high. That's why a lot of times, unfortunately, you're going to have to go and satisfy those requests. It's not something, I think, that was envisioned when the law was originally drafted. I've read through a lot of cases, a lot of litigation associated with the newest iteration of the open records law. It's something that other counties, other entities have brought up, and most of the time, you have to disclose, it's the end, and that's all. I mean, the law makes very clear right at the beginning that it favors disclosure above other interests.
Okay.
Anything else?
Chairman, if I may. Question, the policy that you're preparing, is it specific for county, or can other municipalities use that type of policy?
Well, in my experience, most counties go and have a policy. The policy, I mean, if it's published online, someone else could grab it and copy it, and they could do so, and it wouldn't be a problem. I mean, I, it is all derived from public law, from public information. I mean, obviously, there are aspects, like the standard operating procedures, some of them I included for our open records officer after consulting with her, that are unique to us, but, I mean, if someone else wants to go and borrow and copy, they can do so.
I'll take that as a yes, thank you for your testimony.
I would be willing to send you the text file if you guys wanted to spoil a play.
I mean, if you have a successful policy, and there's other, 20 other municipalities that don't have one, one success populated across 20 is 20 successes.
Well, I'll say this too, in a disclosure, I mean, when I went in, among the various sources, obviously, I consulted the law, I went through the cases that, relevant cases regarding open records law, one of the things I did, I went through various counties' policies to see what they look like, and to be honest with you, I really decided that it would be better to, to have a longer policy with more detail, more citations, more information, more transparency, than to go with a shorter policy where.
And leave too much to the imagination.
Exactly. Because it seems like when there's a lack of information and there's a lack of understanding, and then that's where you get into unnecessary appeals or bad requests that you really aren't actionable, and then you get, you know, obviously, the citizens making those requests aren't really happy with the end result, and there's nothing you on the governmental side can do about it.
Well, it doesn't look that overwhelming. It's not, it's not something that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania would put out, which would be five times what you have.
True. There were some, some counties that had very short policies, one very, couple paragraphs, and I just didn't think that that was the way to go.
Okay, any other questions? We're running out of time on this topic. Very well. Thank you very much for your work. It's good. So at this point, we will plan on voting on this in a couple weeks, so are ready to vote on the agenda?
Thank you for bearing it for my.
Yeah, not a year from your sec, you can leave. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to voting voters. Phyllis, did you want to take it away?
Yes, I do. Thank you for having us here, and this is Susan Swab, the president of our local league, and Jennifer Bliss, our secretary, myself, Phyllis Wright, and Susan Stella is also another one that is studying this issue very carefully. And so the question is, is the, do the voters, do we, the voters, get to legislators, or are the legislators choosing us? That's the bottom line of this whole redistricting program. Remember that the league is unbiased regarding to parties, but not issues, and this is one issue that the league at the state level, as well as several states, are really going after to try to make our democracy safer. I'm going to give the commissioners these folders, because this is a program that can be about an hour long with a lot of questions and so forth, and what I've done is just give you the highlights of some of the information that's available. I'm not going to go into what gerrymandering is, I think you folks know that all very, very well, and the number of seats that are available, and all those things that go on with early our democracy in our House and our Senate. And I have to be very truthful, when this started, our own league thought, well, this isn't a problem for us, because when you look at the map, we're pretty well structured with what goes on. But then, when we got to looking at some of the bills that were trying to get off the table, it was very noticeable that there was a problems and people not understanding who their legislators are and what their issues are and who can vote for what. The parts of Philly and Pittsburgh, of course, are very much into this because of their gerrymandering that you can't even begin to follow. This is a colored sheet in your little folders that talks about what the fair and competitive district should look like. And then there's words like partisan, cracked, and packed, which means how the individual voters are selected for their district. The party in power patrols, they're redistricting every 10 years with a census that's being done, and that's why this is a very timely thing. It seems like 220 is a long ways away. It's not, because of what has to be done at the constitution level in order for this bill to be, in order for this change to be made. We want to shift to focus to win and control rather than the effective governance that is not being done. For instance, there's a lot of gridlock that happens, and a lot of people feel that their voices are devalued because they're not heard by the way that their legislators are selected. Those legislators are only looking at what the money is available to them, what, they're only selected by majority that has voted in the past for them, and so it comes down to a lot of constituents thinking, what, why do I bother to even vote? And that's really become a problem that the league has noticed. So there's frustration amongst both legislative sides, whether it be Democrat or Republican, and what we're looking for is to have a fair district. Pennsylvania is known as one of the largest swing states because of the way the money comes in through PACs and to what is available. I'm not giving the statistics or the place where these facts are known right now, it's in the packet. Pennsylvania has no limits on the PAC donations, so largest donations and refunds raised by outside groups are really good in Pennsylvania, they can really do that. So gerrymandering in your folders, you have another, that shows the impact. In Pennsylvania, 2016, races with incumbents, the percentage shows of races that are there for reelection, 91.7% were up for reelection. Incumbents without primary challengers, 86%, and that's kind of bad, that we don't have persons out there challenging or looking to be part of the system of our government. Races without Republican and Democrat opposition, 48.7%. And the chart goes down, I won't go into it as we would in our public programs that we do, to see the changes in 2014, 2012, and 2010. And the next one is something that I have to study, because I could not understand this. In the Pennsylvania US House in 2012, 50% of the votes cast, 28% of the seats were won by the Democrats. And the Republican side, 49.5, I'll say 49% of the votes cast, but 72% of the seats were won. Why? How can that happen in our democracy? Well, it happens because of the way that gerrymandering is done, that those, most of those seats were in those directed districts. And you can go on with other ones there. So what we're trying to do is to, to move this, the bill along, Bill 72 in the House, excuse me, 722 in the House, and Senate Bill 22 in the Senate. One of the problems is they can't even get them off the tables, because one party has so much control, especially in these particular districts that they want. You'll see that there's a timeline that we're really concerned with, in 2019, 2020, both houses must approve, again, this is next, this is almost next year, we're now going into 2018, so 2019, 2020, both houses must approve the same bill, again, in their next and second year legislative session, which begins January 29, 2010. Now, the problem is, so often, the bill gets in, has to be changed, in order for everyone to agree, so it goes back and forth, and so it's only going to have a year to get this underway. By August 2020, that's the deadline for the bill to pass both houses for the second time, and it has to be done requiring three months' window for advertising before the November election. I don't know if I've said, it's the Pennsylvania Constitution, Article 2, Section 16, is where this is all, comes about, about how this should be done. So by November 2012, and that's all right, if it passed 2020, if it passes both, the public, goes to the public for a vote, so 2020, 21 is our key time, because 20 is the census which would give us 21 to be able to make these changes. So in your packet, you also have a chart, I'll call it, that's a proposal, and I circled the sign that shows the proposal that we, as the League of Liberal Voters and Fair District PA. Fair District PA is the sister to the League of Liberal Voters. The League of Liberal Voters had worked on this for about two years, because it's such a large issue, they went to this system for the, having the study done by the Pennsylvania League of Liberal, excuse me, by the Fair District. They're the ones that you'll see on YouTube, I put a resource list in there of the YouTube that is a way of getting the public to understand more about this. This chart here, I see, this chart here is the one that gives the proposal of what happens now in the Constitution and what we're terming over here. And I can just do it very briefly, what would like to be changed in that Constitution is that the redistricting party, which is now done by the majority party, would have a new commission that would be developed, so that there would be four from a party in this commission with the largest registration, four from the party with the second-largest registration, three from the parties other than the first two that I mentioned. That is what we'd like to do. It would be an independent redistricting commission, there would be a transparent process with public participation, there would be timelines for things to be completed, and it would address other causes of district that is unfair. So that is our goal, to be able to do this. One of our, I should stop there, maybe at that point, is this question?
Well, I would just say a couple things. One is that, for me, this issue is more about geography than anything else. When you look at the geography of the districts, they're so bad, the ones that are really heavily gerrymandered are so bad that the citizens itself have absolutely no idea who represents them, or it's very difficult for them to know. I think that's the thing that gets missed. It's not hard to discuss this topic in like a partisan fashion, but, for instance, when they. It's not hard to discuss this topic in like a partisan fashion, but for instance, when they moved the 65th district, they moved it west, so part of it is moved into Crawford County. Several of the people called into Crawford County in order to do electioneering, and the majority of the people that I talked to had absolutely no idea who their representative was. And then even, there are people in Columbus Township that still believe that their district has changed and that they have an area representative and they do not. So even in our area with the move, you know, there's people in McKee County, I'm sure, who still think that Kathy Rapp is their representative and she's not. And so here, I mean, it's not that bad. When you get into areas where the district literally looks like a crescent or, you know, some other, yeah, some other shape like that, there's no way for anybody to really know who their representative is. And the other problem is, is that affects voter turnout, it, you know, affects motivation to vote, and even who to hold responsible for votes that are made. So that's just something else.
And it's interesting, it's really, in Pennsylvania, you might think the Democrats are pushing this. We found that no, the Republicans were too, because of what you just said. It's been a real concern, because in the old days, it was the river, the mountain, or whatever that created the boundaries. But with technology today, the data allows them to really go in there and circle that Phyllis Wright believes in such and such. And so we better get her into our little gerrymandering section so that she will get my vote and so forth and so forth.
And it's important to note that the city candidates are just as interested in having cemented districts where they can be challenged as there are rural candidates who want their districts cemented. I mean, the legislature has to approve the districts. And so in order to get Democratic votes for a map, you know, or get support from it, as long as they know that their city candidates are going to get taken care of, they'll support it, you know?
So technology can be good, or it can be just like anything else. Just like every commercial company knows that Phyllis Wright doesn't buy this, or she's not, almost putting her on, well, mailing this. But this is democracy we're talking about. We need to have people who have the opportunity to be able to vote on issues and to know what the issues are. You just gave an example, the four townships of western Pennsylvania, or Senator Brooks, excuse me, western Warren County are Senator Brooks counties. And so we try, the league, to keep everybody in. There has been a problem in that the legislators have been, there's been hearings that have not been able to be conducted because this can't get off the table. And it wasn't only this subject, but this is where we became more involved because we realized there's a lot of subjects that won't get off the table because of the votes that's going on. There's also litigation on the legislators regarding not moving this along. And so, but sometimes they won't talk to you regarding this whole issue. Interesting, one out of seven Pennsylvania registrators, excuse me, one out of the seven Pennsylvania registered as independents feel that their party's not heard on issues or voting. In Pennsylvania, 50% of the elections are unopposed due to party control. Now, there's lots of other things that go into this. They want us to also get involved with various other aspects of voting. But until we can get this redistricting under control, we can't do a lot of other things that we'd like to do in regards to this. I hope that you also know that Florida, Wisconsin, North Carolina, Virginia, Texas, and so forth are also suing in their state, trying to get this democracy back in order with districts that represent the people. There's probably over, I'm going to say there's probably about 20-some different organizations in Pennsylvania that have joined Fair District PA in order to make this issue known and to try to make it a better way for our voters. I already mentioned that Pennsylvania is a top target according to the Electoral Integrity Project, showing how we are accepting a lot of money from outside interests in order to swing campaign finances. And I'll give you one big one, and that's the Koch Brothers and how they affected our Marcella Shale and some of those things, especially the eastern part of the county. But there's lots of others that we can get. So as far as legislators supporting this, this time, there's 28 Republicans and 68 Democrats. There's co-sponsors, that's in the House. And in the Senate bill, there's two Republicans and nine Democrats. And that was really this summer. There hasn't been much changes in coming back into more of their work right now. I'm sure there'll be more changes. So what we're asking the commissioners, if you'd be interested in a resolution, and that's in the back of your packet. The resolution is being done by municipal groups, by organizations, by anyone interested in making this Constitution amendment a change. And we were hoping that as League of Women Voters, it would bring this draft to you, that you would be able to look at it and decide if you too would like to join this issue on the redistricting in Pennsylvania. Art, good comment, though.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
No, just add that there are three, four, five, six states that currently have an independent commission. The rest do the redistricting the same way we do. Phil, come on.
Any questions or comments from anyone else?
In your packet, I included the usual questions we get when we do the presentations that you could just simply read from the tab.
All right.
So then let's review the information and make a determination whether or not to like have some agenda.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much for planning on speaking today. Very nice presentation. All right, anything else for the League of Women Voters? Very well, then we'll move on to fire services. Anything else you have to say?
All right, so this is a map. Does anyone know what this is? A map?
Hopefully Warren County.
Warren County.
I thought it was going to be a trip.
I'm here to say that Warren County is the best place to live, right? It's the best place to live. And when I was with the leadership Warren County group, I asked them to repeat after me, Warren County is the best place to live. And I don't want to do that here. Although I did it at the township convention.
They did.
They, they really didn't.
They did not, in reality.
I think you got to keep it up. I mean, this is part of your rebranding initiative, so, I mean.
Anyway, on the map, you will see that there are little Xs. It's high definition Xs and Os here. These are the locations of our fire departments. There's 20 of them across the county, geographically located, as you can see. Within these 20 departments, one is a career department here in the city of Warren. The rest are 100% volunteer fire departments. And they are facing a lot of challenges in these economic times. And with the advent of both the husband and wife, the family working, there's not as much time as there used to be for volunteers, which I'm sure Phyllis finds in her organization. One of the, and I'm a numbers guy, so I started with the numbers. So you've got 19 departments, and there's about 10 people in each of these departments that really do 80% of the work, which isn't different than what Phyllis has in her organization, where she has 20 people. There's probably five or six that really do 80% of the work.
Kind of.
Kind of. So, so now we're relying on those 190 people to respond 24/7. And the other part of it is, other than the city of Warren and certain surrounding areas in Glade and North Warren, the remainder of Warren County is supported by volunteers for EMS. In other words, emergency medical services are provided by these same volunteers. And while they're struggling for members, they're very much struggling for those trained, specifically trained in EMS. And it's not, not gotten unnoticed by these departments, but independently, they're not able to address this themselves. So collectively, the council of governments back in 2009 said, what can we do as, for our member agencies of the municipalities? What can we do to help support these volunteers? And we embarked on having each of the membering departments adopt resolutions. The county adopted a resolution back in 10, 2010, to support what we were doing here. Along those lines, we had identified in 2012 a website for each of the 20 agencies, plus a few other agencies, which we populated for these groups with funding through DCD and local matching. Spin forward to 2014. Up until 2014, there was an act that was enacted by the state of Pennsylvania known as the EMS Act, which changed a few things. And it required that these agencies sign up for 24/7 coverage of EMS. So now we've asked the volunteers who were stretched to respond 24/7 for their EMS calls. And we hosted many meetings, held a variety of meetings, and came up with a response plan, an EMS response plan that was sent off to the Department of Health and approved by the Department of Health. And we have 14 agencies that are supporting Warren County that have signed on to the EMS response. Why is this important? Well, it's important that people know that we are trying to do really some very difficult work to get our agencies to respond 24/7, but we're bucking up against a trend. And this is some more numbers, but this is a chart of the trend line of Pennsylvania EMTs over the course of the last five years. And over that period of time, the state of Pennsylvania has lost 17% of their EMTs. Not a very good trend, especially if you're a volunteer organization trying to respond 24/7 to a county that is the best place to live, but it's growing, greater. And the, so let's, let's take a look at what we've done. I mean, we've had workshops recently for the EMS. We invited municipalities to come to this. Oh, we had pretty good participation. We identified during that meeting, a few other numbers that I want to bring forward, and then we'll go to the punchline. The summary of the plan was pretty good. Everyone adopted the plan. After, we implemented the measuring system where we were going to, the public safety guys out at 100 Dillon Drive in Youngsville, Rochestraut Township, are tallying our responses and how are we doing to these responses. In the first half of the year, there were 4,355 responses in Warren County for EMS.
Can you repeat that?
Uh huh.
4,000.
4,355. Of those, emergent care in the city, which are the paid departments, responded to 881. So you can see that the vast number of these are responded by volunteers, not by paid people.
Is that initial tap?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry?
If some of them are dropped, they may then be picked up by a page?
The, hang on just a second. I think, I think I gave you a wrong number.
Okay.
Hang on. Go back. 12. 12. Thanks. Now, I think, yeah, I gave you the wrong number. This is the number of dropped calls.
Yes, that sounds more.
Right, you're right. 881 calls were dropped. 20% of the calls were dropped with the city of Warren involved. When you take the city of Warren, the city in the emergent care, there were 1,795. All right, so there was 1,800 calls of the 4,300 are done by volunteers. So almost half are done by volunteers. But 45% of the calls done by those volunteers are dropped. And in fact, over that period of time.
And dropped, to be clear, means that after 10 minutes of getting tapped, they have not responded.
That's correct. The expectation is that if you, you are Mrs. Smith and you need an ambulance, that within 10 minutes, the ambulance is on its way to you. The, so anyway, I don't need to go over a bunch of other details, other than there are cases when these agencies aren't even able to get out the door. In other words, they don't have enough people to even get to the ambulance to get it out the door within 20 minutes. And that trend line since 2016, in February 2016, there were 46 in that month. And by June of 2016, there were 57. And now, June of this year, 91 of those calls, an ambulance didn't get out the door from the agency that was asked to respond. So these are numbers that were never known before, other than the departments knew that they had, they had an issue. And how were they going to address this became part of the impetus of, let's get a response that is going to be better in genesis of this document. So we've helped host a variety of different meetings. The conclusion is that we've got a lot of work to do. And there's a lot of recommendations that came out of our September 14th meeting that involve municipalities and also involve the county of Warren. So Ben, how do you want to address that? I've got a few things here for, to contemplate, but why don't you, can you share the, what your ideas were with the public safety group?
So at the meeting on September 14th, we solicited suggestions from a couple dozen volunteers, agencies, as well as professionals and professional EMS care providers. And there were elected officials there as well. And so what the Public Safety Department, including me, did was we took those suggestions and asked, what can we actually implement pretty quickly that might be a rightful shot, rather than kind of a spread approach to successfully helping with 24/7 man coverage of EMS providers?
Person coverage?
No, technically. That has not changed yet. I'm sure it will. We broke it into three basic groups of things that we thought that municipalities and/or EMS agencies should do, starting with recruitment. We found that there are a couple hundred former EMS providers that live in Warren County that are certified or have been certified as EMTs, paramedics, or first responders that are no longer active in a volunteer agency. Those are the easiest people to plug in. Even if they've lapsed their membership or lapsed their certification, getting that is going to be much easier. You don't have to re-inculcate them in the culture of what it is to be an EMS provider. They know it. They may have gotten burned out and left for a few years. But I think those are the people that we need to go after to reactivate them.
All right, before you leave, so we're talking 56 active EMRs and 174 active EMTs. Or, my math is pretty good, and mine is 230 people that are covering the entire county. Now, that includes the city of Warren and emergent care, which are paid personnel. But it's a very select group. It's a very small group of very important public safety people.
Right.
Right? VITs.
Considering the cover.
VITs are just volunteer, never mind. Where did those numbers come from, by the way?
We, the county, coordinated from the Department of State from Pennsylvania.
Okay.
So all, all of us that are EMS providers have to go through a registration, a testing process with the state. And then we have to keep up with CE, continuing education. And the state records all of that and keeps it in a database, which they allow the county to access. The next thing that we focused on was really just leadership within the organizations. Some of the chiefs and your officers that are in departments have kind of created, I suppose, a culture we're partway into. And we were simply encouraging the chiefs to take new members under their wing and really train them on not only the day-to-day procedures of how you handle calls, but also integrate them into the culture. So that was the second recommendation. We also were encouraging the We also were encouraging hospitals and other care systems to engage in EMS since they're big stakeholders. For municipalities, we suggested that one of the big problems we have is you'll have an EMT that's qualified to handle the call en route, but is not able to get to the station and get the ambulance out the door within 10 minutes. That also goes for fire trucks and other apparatus. So one suggestion we had was get municipal employees that are trained and very capable of driving big vehicles to be the first responder that actually gets in the truck and gets it moving, and just have the EMT and/or EMR meet them on scene. That should increase the...
Response time.
Yeah, response time. Another thing that we have a problem with is simply scheduling. It takes a lot of time to call through your lists, even if it's just 10 people, just to make sure that tomorrow, you've got your ambulance covered by volunteers. And the chief's time could be better spent on other things rather than making those calls. So what we suggested is utilizing municipalities' clerical support that is already in place in order to make those calls and find out who's signed up for tomorrow and make sure that they're still on, or, you know, the next week, whatever. But that is something that I suspect would only take an hour or so, a week, for clerical staff and municipalities to do. So that's one of our big recommendations. I'm looking for a township that's willing to give that a try. No one's stepped up yet.
And that'll take some time.
It will, but I think we're going to need to make a direct ask and encourage people to step up. I'm not entirely sure what department and municipality work together the best already that they might be willing to do it, but my suspicion is find one of the several townships that have a township supervisor who's a member of the department and is a supervisor. Maybe it'll happen. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is simply enforce the law, or we're not trying to enforce it, we're encouraging municipalities to follow it in terms of getting 24/7 coverage. The county's not trying to step in here and tell municipalities and local fire departments how to do their job. We're simply trying to step in and partner with them in order to get them from dropping calls to 24/7 coverage. It's really not that challenging because if a department is not capable of getting the members, you know, during a day shift or something like that, they can simply call into the 911 dispatch center and say, you know what, we're not going to be able to get out the door in 10 minutes, therefore, please direct all of our calls to whatever other department is capable of covering that. So we're not here to tell them how to do their job. We're simply analyzing some of the options that they provided in that September 14th meeting, and we've gone through and discovered the ones that we think are the easiest, immediate, and implementable ideas. All right, back to you.
All right, so with that said, I'll leave you, the county commissioners, with these thoughts. Number one, the public safety people who work at 100 Dillon and Burgesstraut Township are very key to the quality of life of the people of Warren County. But that is the backdrop. We need to leverage those, that department as best we can to provide for the volunteers to become trained, make it easier for them to be trained, make it easier for them to understand these numbers, et cetera. Number two, provide support to the EMS responders by proclaiming EMS Strong in May. I do know that the commissioners in the past have adopted resolutions in support of EMS Week. Instead of something as lukewarm as a piece of paper that gets proclaimed and signed in a meeting, I would hope that you could take something a little more upbeat going into next year. Number three, contractual agreement, we currently have a contractual agreement with County Warren with Insight Technology. We have that web presence that was built in 2012, and I think we need to work with Insight Technology to migrate that over to the municipal hub. So we need to, we need the county's assistance there. And just overall, from a public awareness perspective, whenever possible, make sure the public's aware that we're looking out for their quality of life and the CMS is going to improve over time. It just takes time to get there. We've started to measure it. By even simply measuring it, these agencies are starting to work very closely with each other and partner with their neighbors to provide the responses needed. So we'll get there.
Very good. Well, we only have a few minutes left, so are there any questions from the commissioners?
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Any questions from anybody else?
Well, in addition to the requirements these volunteers need to have placed upon them by the state, they also have to do their own fundraising to support themselves, which is a tremendous, if you think about it, on top of trying to serve on these calls that Paul's referring to, they also have to try to help the public to support what they do, and that's another issue that they have.
Yeah, this is something that anyone can step in and help with. I understand that there are many people that shouldn't be on the back of an ambulance, that should not be, you know, grossed out by going to calls. I get that. But everyone can, at minimum, go to the chicken barbecue.
The turkey parties that are coming up this time of year.
Yeah. But even better, there are auxiliary organizations for almost every department in this county. Those are, you know, at least in Spring Creek Township and the department I'm a member of, you know, they're mostly an older demographic that are not capable of actually doing the barbecues and the turkey parties and such that they used to. So we need fresh volunteers to step in and help with that. And that's really something that anybody can do. It really just looks like donating a few dozen cupcakes to, you know, fundraise or something like that. It's something that anybody can step in and help with. They just need to, you just need to approach your department and find out how they can plug you in. But you're right to identify that the emergency responders are not the ones that should be spending their time. They should be training. They should be going on calls. They should be fixing apparatus. They shouldn't be spending as much of the time as they are on fundraising.
Well, I mean, that also runs itself with the question of the responsibility of the community in general. I mean, this is another one of those situations where everybody wants services, but nobody wants to pay for them. And so year after year, volunteers are forced to try to fundraise for something that technically should be a fundamental function of the community and the government.
Exactly.
You either want your house fire put out, or you want assistance when you're having a health issue in your home, you know, to have that insurance, that costs money. Now, you can, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I understand how, you know, the challenges across the board, but, you know, it's another one of those things, you want, you want fire service, you don't, you know, and, you know. I mean, to me, that seems like the bottom line question to some extent.
Operational is where they, you would like them to spend their time, training with their neighbors, training on a periodic basis. I can tell you that at our fire station where I belong, through July, there were 5,000 man-hours of training conducted in our building. We had 20 members across the county train 160 hours for essentials. And we have plenty of guys and gals that are willing to go through some of this training. But when it comes time to working the chicken barbecue or the turkey party, that's when they really have some, they really do struggle because the same people, those 10 people, end up doing all that work. It's the same 10 people. And, yeah. So keep them in mind. They're very important. They're a very underappreciated group of people, the volunteers of these departments.
All right, well, thank you very much for the presentation, everyone.
Thank you very much.
I, since we're at 1 o'clock, is there anything that's pressing from the commissioners in terms of scheduling or department updates, project updates?
Do you want to go there?
Oh, auditing?
Yeah.
Sure.
Mostly so we can, if it's possible, have a decision made to try to get on an audit schedule, because if we don't get back to them before the beginning of November, we're going to have a tough time getting into anybody's schedule.
Okay. Since it's after 1 o'clock, you're all welcome to stay, but don't feel that it would be rude of you if you wanted to.
Unless you want to stay and listen to us talk about the auditing proposals, I mean, they're very interesting.
Down, down, down.
Good to see you, Jack.
I put a U in twice, I just can't imagine.
Don't blush me.
I'm a little wary.
Carry on, Steve.
I loaned these to the treasurer, so he had a chance to look through them, too. I don't know if the commissioners have seen them much at all.
I've just started getting them, so...
Any general consensus? I know...
I'll start off. I mean, Mayor Dussel, I think, is a great firm, but, you know, I can't justify the gap between the lowest and the highest, so I would strike Mayor Dussel.
I like them, they're great. I think so, too. I think their price is too much for us right now. On the other end, Felix and Glockler, their firm is a little bit smaller firm, and although they've done a city, I don't know that they've done many counties, but I think we had the potential to run into the same problems with them like we did with Dreschler and Leckie. All that would take is to have one partner move someplace else, and our schedule gets dropped as to what we thought was going on with them. So I just didn't see enough in their background for what we really were hoping for. Down to the last three then, RKL, Baker Tilly, and Zolkowski and Axelrod, they're all pretty, fairly close in the range. They went and run from, the three-year total payout would be $115,530 up to $137,275. Local offices are coming from the Pittsburgh and Erie area, I believe, on both of those. I checked with all of them to see if they've worked with counties with jointers for DHS. I was surprised how many of these did. I didn't know there were that many out there, but all of these three firms have worked with jointers for DHS. They all have done Class 6 PA counties, which, there's a big difference between classes, so they've worked with counties of our size. Axelrod is the only one who's worked with Acufund software. Not that that's the end-all, but Acufund is a stumbler in trying to get firms to work with things, so they do have that benefit. I also know from one other county that they really don't like Acufund, but that doesn't make a difference, you know, whether they like it or not.
There's somebody in the wire who likes Acufund, we will find them.
Well, actually, it's kind of Mayor Dussel. They're okay with it.
Well, they just said that. They don't like it, but they were okay with it, yes.
They didn't brim this.
To me, any of the three of these would be good. Axelrod is the least expensive. I don't know that the least expensive is the way to go, but Axelrod is also the one who has worked with Acufund software. And not that that's the only thing, but then they know what to expect and what we can and can't get reports out of versus some of the others. I mean, when I asked one of the other firms, they said, well, we're sure we can interface with your software to extract information we need. And I kind of laughed at that one, because I don't know that that's quite as easily, within the number of hours they've allotted to the audits, that that would work in there.
Mr. Dredger, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I looked at them and looked at, one of the, besides the dollars, I looked at, did they work with counties in Pennsylvania? And I looked at, do I think they have adequate staffing? I will say, I did have a question on Axelrod, if they did have a big enough staff to handle it, I mean, that they wouldn't be spread too thin. So I had a question mark on staffing. The other ones, they basically all did, had references to Pennsylvania counties, because I, basically, when I look at, I don't want to come in and cut their teeth on Warren County.
Right.
So they all three had, and so from that point, I think it's a matter of, you know, looking at the pluses and minuses on what other things that they may, you know, that we might want to look at. I know Baker and Tilly, I saw that they listed, specifically listed six counties in Pennsylvania. And so those other two, to me, I ranked them as, yes, they look like their firms had adequate, you know, experience and staffing.
Because ZNA has, I believe, a couple dozen on staff, but in the Pittsburgh office, it's only like a half dozen, something.
I'm not sure.
Well, I guess if you think about prior, how many people came to here, and we'd say three to four people on site. Now, I don't know what that meant when you go back to the office, but to me, it's three to four people. And I'm sure the three to four people we have here weren't everybody that puts their hands on it.
Right.
I'm sure they have one lead person that comes with the other ones. So from a standpoint of six maybe in Pittsburgh, I think that would be, you know, they would have enough people that would be able to come here, gather, take a look at things, and do an adequate job, so. I did, I did make a phone call because of one of the references, and it was what the mayor, was it Dussel? And I got a favorable response on their, on their work, but obviously, the price is an issue.
Yeah, there's no doubt, even the competitors, I believe, know that Mayor Dussel is very good, and I don't think anyone was discrediting them. It's purely a cost difference for me. Well, I'm leaning towards ZNA because of their expertise, the fact that they're on the side of the state. They're the least expensive, we're really close. They came and interviewed, and they use Acufund, or have used it.
See, I would give them, I guess, a plus on that if they had the Acufund experience, so they would...
Yeah, I'm fine with any of the three of these. They're all, all five were, you know, certainly good firms.
I admit, I'm very pleased, by the way, to see that if we accept one of these two, we're going to be paying less than what we're paying our current auditing firm, which is...
Which is just crazy that we didn't do it sooner.
Well...
I mean, it is what it is, but, I mean, that's one of the advantages for an auditing firm that drags their feet, and like, it's like you're constantly in the state of, you know, working with them, and you don't want to, you know...
That was the other comforting thing, is that both the firms that came and met with us were saying it's not going to be a problem to have September...
They said in August.
Yeah. They said in August.
August was what was in the letter that went out that I didn't realize was with what Pam had said to me, that we stated that we wanted it by August 31st, and I kind of said, well, I think we were saying we wanted it by August 31st to ensure that we hit the September 30th date, but, you know, we tried that, we tried that again this year and it didn't work. There's no reason it shouldn't have, but it didn't work.
Right.
It's important for your bondholders to have that information on time.
Well, for everything.
Too much longer. Anyway, so we're ready to load on the next public meeting? Okay, very good.
It always was, it was, I'm sorry, Judy, go ahead.
When is the next public meeting?
I believe it's not this...
Is that the 8th?
No. Oh, yeah, it would be.
It's three weeks away.
It would be, no, it's next week.
Are you permitted to make a decision before that meeting and publicly announce it at that meeting? This is not a sealed bid, because this is specialized services. We really didn't even have to do the bid. We did it to see what we could get.
Yeah.
My concern is if we wait until the 8th to try to get in, somebody should be coming in for a preliminary audit in December, just to look at what we've got through the end of November. And if we're not contacting them until the 8th or afterwards...
You might miss the bus.
Yeah.
DNA, Baker Tilly, so...
I don't, I know that they, I know it's not approved official until that public meeting.
Okay.
Well, no, I mean, we haven't signed an agreement with them. We can notify them that we've accepted their bid. I mean, there's no...
Can we do that?
It's not a, it's just not a bid like a construction project, so as long as we announce it at a public meeting.
Yeah, they, they didn't come in a sealed bids, and I don't think we were even absolutely required to do that, so...
Well, we are kind of making a decision in the public meeting, so...
I'm fine with Axelrod. I'm fine with Axelrod. I thought they were all good, and I liked RKL's. That one was okay. And then I like Mayor Dusel's, too, but, you know, I mean, they're, you know, it's like a Mercedes-Benz, you know, we need like a nice Ford Focus.
Not many Mercedes-Benz in Warren County. It is the best place to live.
We have like a minivan, and it just has extra cup holders.
Okay, very good.
Well, I had narrowed it down to those two, so I'm fine with ZNA if that's the direction everyone else wants to go.
Yeah, that's where I lean.
It never made any sense to me that it was an audit firm, I was here for a year and a half, an audit firm out of New York City.
Right. And maybe they're only PA counties.
Oh, I know that.
They did other little municipalities or something in PA, and they were always asking, can you...
And I have a town that's good, when they're more expensive than what...
At the time, or...
I'd love to look back at those bids.
I'd be willing to bet good money that they were just the lower bidder at the time, and they, you know...
It's kind of like selecting a dentist. You get a dentist when you move into town, and you stick that dentist...
You don't want to switch, yeah.
Even though they give you a root canal, you don't need...
The analogy is...
I didn't use the lawyer analogy when setting up the table.
All right, very good.
Well, I like this for Pam, to contact.
You can contact her. Do it, she's out. Go to, let them know.
We need to let the other ones know also that they're not...
Well, Pam can write a letter, I would guess.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have Pam send a letter.
Before everybody takes off, I'd like to talk to the commissioners, if I could. Change of gear, we're all the same, remember?
Okay. The decisions will be made, I assume, that need to be in a public meeting?
That needs to be in a... That's correct. It's not a decision that needs to be made in public.
All right, the meeting adjourns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.